Call the meeting to order. Roll call.
Mr. Antoine is here. Ms. Bonnick and Mr. Connor is absent with notice. Dr. Demus?
Here.
Ms. Ikors?
Here.
Ms. Rice?
Here.
Mr. Young?
Here.
Rice, for the pledge, please.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we approve the agenda, there's a couple of amended amendments under consent action, F approval of amendments. I think you have a copy of those from our last meeting. And under the regular meeting action items, item E, facilities resolution, 85 for the two-way radio equipment. You must, you think you have that information as well. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item four, celebrations.
Okay, thank you. Got a few celebrations for you tonight. Hamilton Parsons Elementary, four celebrations. They hosted their annual fun run and surpassed their goal and raised $20,000. Students and teachers had a great time participating in the annual Spirit Week. You see some pictures of that. The teachers and staff there have kind of regathered to do some planning around Leader and me. And they, like most of our buildings, have kind of captured our annual theme of choose joy and are figuring out ways to include recognizing students with some sort of award or that. And I think these are happening monthly. So some good news and celebrations from Hampar. Indian Hills held the Basketball Jones Assembly for them this year. The theme is the power of yet. So this is a combination of his skill set and some messaging. An example from this year's assembly was this idea of fail forward. When you fail, keep trying, keep going. You just don't have it yet. Kindergartners did some special celebrations with the new CKLA curriculum. So with nursery rhymes, and they had a nursery rhyme dress-up day. And then Indian Hills has had the fire department. Visit kindergarten through third grade classes to teach important fire safety lessons. So Washington Elementary, teachers are working hard to implement the new ELA curriculum, and they're finding some creative ways to make the knowledge come alive. So see there in the upper left corner, I think that's some of that anatomy study. We've got some medical professionals there playing the part as they learn this new curriculum. Mention of the fun run again at Washington Elementary and success with that. They've raised enough, 10 of the students raised enough money individually to go on the annual limo ride with Mrs. Hepner. And a special thank you to Four Corners Diner for donating the lunch for these winning students. Washington Elementary is grateful for the Romeo Public Library for the book mobile visit. And once again, we see mention of our Washington Township Fire Department visiting kindergarten or young fives, in this case, through third grade. From the high school level, we held our annual career day at Romeo High School last week and had great participation again from community organizations and businesses. And every year, it seems that our business partners, you know, kind of one up and try and get some things at their display booths that actually the kids can participate and kind of be active in. This year, Mary Ann Brush helped support the Dress for Success table, and they had a competition for both staff and students who dressed in professional attire for this day. So I'm not sure when, Mrs. McFarland, but I know our ninth graders will be going out to the Novi Expo Career Day, I think, in November. So this is, yep, so this is, this is kind of, in terms of our ninth grade students, one of the first active participant career exploration things. But all of our students, nine, 12, get to participate in this day. So that's our celebrations for today.
Thank you.
We do have a presentation this evening. Ladies, if you want to come up to the podium. Mr. Murray, can you get them turned on there? So we have a couple representatives from the E Board, from the District PTOC Group. Joanna Sarah and Jennifer Lees are here. So we've met a few times this year, and they got some information that they'd just like to talk about. I think some is in reference to some of the traditional things that the PTOC has done and some of the unique things that they're really targeting for this year. Take it away, ladies.
I'm Jennifer Lees. I'm a parent from Hamilton Parsons and Ninth Grade Academy. I also serve as secretary for the PTOC Board, this group that we're discussing. Our group consists of parents, representatives from each school that gets together three to four times through the year to discuss what's working in our schools, what's not, from a parent perspective, and how we can support each other. We also annually work on coordinating the para-pro and bus driver appreciation luncheon, and also the kindergarten welcome signs.
I'm Joanna Sarah. I'm a mom at Amanda Moore. I'm a former teacher turned business owner, and I'm serving as president this year of PTOC. And we've instituted a couple new things this year. One of them is we decided, instead of always looking for new resources, to kind of combine our efforts. And we created a very large Google Drive where each of the schools have contributed to different things that they're doing so that one of the schools is struggling or trying to find different ideas. We now have a place to go and share resources. So that's something new that we've instituted this year. Some of the big things for us are community, connection, collaboration, communication, because we really want to strengthen our bond between especially the elementary schools, because our students are all going to be together in the middle and high school, and we just want to be able to form those bonds. So some of the new things that we're doing in PTOC this year, the first thing is we are trying to combine our efforts in greening of all the schools. So we're finding a green rep from every school and kind of helping them and guiding them to make sure that we can try to have all of our Romeo schools become official Michigan green schools this year. A new event that we're putting on is going to be a fifth-grade mixer event where all of the fifth-grade students are going to be bused to the middle school, and they're going to have time to mingle and meet each other before they actually start middle school. And that'll happen in the spring. We're also working on creating a mom event, which will potentially be on March 1st, where a lot of different moms are going to have the opportunity to get together while raising money for the district, but also getting to know one another and kind of combining our resources more and trying to find different things that we can do together to help our community. And we're also looking at a basketball fundraiser for Spring '24 as a way to raise money for PTOC as well, to try to cover some of those things we do, like the bus lunch, the para-pro lunch, and the kindergarten signs. So that is something that we're kind of exploring for spring, and it's going to be a really amazing basketball game where principals and teachers and different staff play either a professional basketball team. They have the Harlem Wizards. Or some other fun ideas that we're exploring that I can't talk about yet. So, wonderful. That's it.
Any questions for the group?
No.
Thank you for your good work.
Thank you, ladies. I just want to say thank you, because I know that, you know, a lot of these fundraisers and things that they do for our students just add to the extras that they get during the learning day. Working in a school district, we know how hard our parents work. So, and thank you.
Yep.
You're welcome.
So I just, I just want to piggyback what the lady said and maybe just talk about, you know, I've been involved with PTOC since I came. I didn't start the group. The group existed before I came. And like many things, we didn't meet for a year and a half or so just because of the pandemic. And so last year, I think we really got going again, and there were some parents who, who had been leading the group that were getting closer to the end of their kids' journeys in the school district. And so created an opportunity for some new leadership. And I'm grateful for what I hear in our meetings about, especially at the elementary level, trying to break down any barriers that would cause our schools to be competitive or viewed competitively or evaluated against each other. And I think that's really important. And we've had some things that we've dealt with at the board level where we've tried to minimize that or speak that away. So I'm grateful for the leadership. And just, I think there's a genuine desire to represent what our community, what's best about our community. And I think the things they've started are really going to allow that. And I've seen, maybe at individual building levels, individual members of the PTOC reaching out to help, you know, with ideas and things because they've been down that journey in their own, you know, elementary school, and they just want everyone to be at the best that they can. So thank you again, ladies, for coming. Keep up the good work, and we'll continue to support. Yes, we had a glorious picture there. I appreciate everyone's desire to embrace the picture. So we'll move forward, and maybe we'll have you guys come back in the second half of the year and kind of give an update on where things are at and maybe make that kind of an annual thing that we hear back from the organization a couple times a year. That's our presentation for tonight.
Okay. Item six, consent action. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item seven, informational updates, new business communications.
I don't think we have any communications other than I saw Internet had sent. I think they had a last call for the Richmond event. That's tomorrow night. And I know there was some conversation at our last superintendent's event that we seemed to be on a little bit of a downward trend on county school boards association meetings. So they just asked that we just encourage, you know, when we can to get at least a representative or two from districts. So we're not on the schedule this year. We'll be up again next year. So anyways, down the street. And I think the presentation tomorrow night is on early childhood.
Wayne and I are going.
Okay, good. So we, the only committee meeting since our last regular meeting is the Safety Committee met on October 2nd at the high school. And I think, Mr. Young, you've got a report for that?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you, Dr. Robinson. So on October 2nd, I was also joined with Catherine and Rachel. We covered quite a substantial amount just as far as what we've been doing with the two-way radio and our training. So to kick it off, we were shown our new entry system, the Raptor. And that was unique because of just the sheer amount of information that the front office can obtain from that. If you're on a list that you shouldn't be in a school or buy a school, that information will come up. And we can alert, you know, one of our school liaison officers or the right staff for that. So it was cool, and seeing the picture printed, it gives you real detail and shows you how that can be effective. But along with those, it also comes with detailed reports that the district safety team reviews as well. The people, the traffic within our buildings. A follow-up from last year, we had our assessment from SEC. And they did our new transportation facility. There was a few items on there, and we have plans to address them. But also along those lines of the assessment, our assessment last year, there was a heavy focus on the two-way radio system for the district. And this has been a project even prior to that. So to kind of get a sample of the layers that are involved with those walkies. When we think walkie-talkies, we sometimes just, you know, think very traditional. But these are very high-tech, high-level with multiple channels and tweeters for our district. So it was also cool seeing that. The other big focus, too, was interior door safety as well for our classrooms. So it is standard for classrooms during the day to be fully closed as a added layer of security. And then I did want to talk about the advert training. So as of right now, we have over 700 employees that have been, have gone through that training in nine different sessions. And there will be a continued push from our officers, Bauer and the Deputy Labish, who will continuously do those and train those programs now. So that is pretty great. Don't really have anything else to add other than the funding. We are waiting from the state to see where our funding will be. And that'll fall under 31AA. It was, it replaced a former category. And also under that, mental health can be assessed from that or used within our schools. So did you have anything else, board members or Dr. Robinson?
I was just going to ask, when the next, I know the subcommittee was kind of an ad hoc in the original design of it. Do we have another date for upcoming?
Typically, for the past couple of years, that committee has met once each, you know, half of the year. So spring and fall. So something we can discuss as a part of the organizational meeting. I think the other thing that we talked a little bit about is we're doing so much updating on safety at regular meetings that we can leverage both if necessary.
I didn't know if, like, when your school safety team meets, if, you know, even a board member could be invited to that. Or I just, you know, I feel like we were, we can be leveraged, you know, to do more of the work and the hands-on stuff. So if that's an option in the future.
I would like to add, our district safety team, they do quite an extensive amount of work. And yes, we received that information in email. And to hit on that, it would be great to, you know, just even come to one of those because our leaders in our district really do care about who's coming in, assessing situations with local community partners along with our great police and fire departments as well, our community. And it's just unique when we get into these meetings and we see the layer of thought process that goes towards our procedures and training of staff. So, thank you.
Thank you for your reporting.
So just a reminder of our November meetings that are coming up. And we've made the November 6th committee of the whole. So we'll actually meet here at 5:00 PM. So all are welcome. Hopefully, all of you can attend. We have facilities on November 8th, and then a policy subcommittee on November 20th.
Okay. Item C, state assessment and NWEA data update.
So Mr. Murray and Mrs. McFarland are here to share some information. Do you want me to click, or are you?
You kicking this off? All right, cool. Well, thank you for the opportunity to come and talk about some of our standardized test scores and screener data. Jennifer and I have some stuff to share for you from all three of our levels. So without further ado, first thing we're going to look at is elementary M-step takeaways. And so try to pull something out, working in conjunction with our elementary principals, and some of the key takeaways that we found in our four cores. So when you look at fourth and fifth grade math, we've actually surpassed pre-pandemic levels, which is awesome. Shows the work that we've done with math intervention, focus on strong tier-one instruction is making a difference. Reading and writing are moving towards our pre-pandemic levels, but have plateaued. That's the reason why we looked at making a change in curriculum, right? And we're expecting to see big results. You know, hopefully, a little bit of preliminary data, you know, mid-year and maybe at the end of the year in terms of our progress. It is quite a task. I've said turning a cruise ship 180 degrees in terms of the approach. And so teachers are doing an awesome job right now, but it's tough. It's hard work, different than what we're used to. Social Studies is above the county and state average and has returned to pre-pandemic levels. And our science achievement is well above county and state averages. So I can take a second light to look at. Hopefully, it's a little bit clearer on the, on your TV screen there.
You also have the handout.
Yes. This is math. Again, fourth grade math, above pre-pandemic level. Fifth grade math. Social Studies. Still plenty of work to do, don't get me wrong. And our science achievement, again, well above state and county averages. So where do we go from here? First thing is to ensure guaranteed and viable curriculum in tier one. You know, one thing that I love to say a lot is our best intervention is prevention, right? So the best way for us to keep kids from falling into gaps is to not allow them to happen in the first place. That happens by having strong core instruction. And, you know, we have to have rigorous programming that has endurance, leverage, and readiness. And then we have to train our teachers in how to use it. If you think about the definition of a guaranteed viable curriculum, I have it here. It's the fact, the fact that it's guaranteed assures that specific content is taught in specific courses at specific grade levels, regardless of the teacher who the student has assigned, right? So that similarity vertically and horizontally. And that there's also enough time within the instructional day to teach it. And so CKLA is an example, right? It is much different than we've been used to in the past in the terms, in terms of having a team approach and a plan. You know, it does require what I call complementary teaching. You can look up the definition of that, and there's lots of different definitions. The way that I equate it is, I'm a big sports guy, like Dr. Robinson. Football is important to me. And I think about the concept of complementary football, right? How the offense, defense, and special teams all work together within the team, right? To get the win. And so for us, when you think of our elementary teachers, we have to be doing our part to benefit the team. The team meaning their colleagues who are above them in terms of what they're teaching. And then, you know, obviously, the students as the number one focus. When you think of those three descriptors up there, endurance relates to skills and knowledge that kids will need to retain and use later. Leverage is something that can be used across many disciplines. Reading and writing is an example of that. And then readiness is just readiness for the next level of learning. Not everything that teachers teach at a specific grade level is a standard that ends that year. Oftentimes, they are laying the groundwork and undergirder for success later on. And so it's important that we are systemic and systematic in our approach. So our first steps, you know CKLA, right? Is our ELA curriculum that's been implemented this year. We do have new social studies curriculum, K-5. K-1, 2 is fairly similar. Three Giants is new for third grade. And then TCI, the virtual, right? Or online programming, excuse me. And then we need to revisit our math instruction to ensure, again, this notion of guaranteed and viable curriculum. Everybody holding the rope, pulling in the same direction, ensuring that we have the time, resources, and training for teachers and students to excel.
Thank you. It's sweaty, thank you. So as Rob had shared at the beginning, this is lifted from our middle school administrative team and high school administrative team. They had a chance to look and kind of, what did they notice? What did they wonder last week at our ALT? So the secondary key takeaways in both ELA and math in seventh grade, we increased our proficiency pretty well. And again, pre-pandemic, we're higher at that point. Our PSAT 8, both ELA and math, were above state and county average, which I would expect. And again, we did, we did really well with PSAT 8, even though we declined a little bit in ELA. When we think about the PSAT 8, the first time it was given was in the spring of 2019. We had been giving the M-step. And in the spring of 19, we moved to the PSAT 8. Math, if you recall, the board approved, those of you that were on the board, approved a new middle school math curriculum in the spring of winter, winter of 1920? It was the 1920 school year, because we were piloting it, and we went for approval. And the first year was 2021, which you know what year that was. But we're seeing some fruits of the middle school teachers' labor in math, because we now have an aligned curriculum to the math standards in the state of Michigan. So pretty excited for those two grade levels. Not that sixth grade was bad. It's just this is what the middle school team lifted up. The high school team lifted up SAT evidence-based reading and writing and math, continued to trend up, but it's not quite yet back to where we were pre-pandemic. Just anecdotally, I know because some kids think colleges don't, that's not weighted heavily. So sometimes, some of the kids may not do as well as they could. But we've really tried to make a concerted effort to talk about scholarship funds and different opportunities for them to do their best. Just last week, Thursday, our 11th graders took the NMSQT, which is the PSAT in the fall. And this, this year was digital. So I think our kids got a great experience because it'll be digital again when it's the state assessment in the spring. So went well. It was not as bad as we thought. Mrs. Anderson, Holly Anderson, the counselor at the high school, did a great job with Chris Fonnelli and the other counselors supporting it. And our PSAT 9 scores have steadily increased over the years. And so we lifted up some slides for you to see. So you can see here's seventh grade ELA and math. So in the green was last spring scores. And the blue, in the blue column where there's a little gap, that gap was the 2020 spring, when no state assessments were given because most everyone, all people, were remote. So we're above those levels. Not quite where I'd like us to be, but we'll keep working. And here's the PSAT 8. So you can see 2019, the blue, solo blue dot. That was the first year we gave it. Then we had the year off. And you can kind of see the trends as we move as a district. Little bit lower this year in ELA, but we're still trending upward and higher than pre-pandemic. So here's the PSAT. I'm sorry, it's a table, not any kind of graph. But if you look last, this is the class of 26, our 10th graders this year. The 11th graders are the class of 25. So this is the PSAT, the overall mean, and then the evidence-based reading and writing and math. So you can see, we've made significant gains in the mean. And most of that has to do with the math. And I want to point out and thank the board for the continued support, if you're aware of it or not. But if our kids are in algebra in ninth grade, they have math every day. And that's the best intervention, I think, that we've ever made when we went to the block schedule. In the first year, we didn't do that. But it really has closed a lot of the gaps. The teachers can be more nimble, and they have more time to spend shoring up the basic skills kids need to be successful. But I believe we're going to continue to see our kids do really well as they continue to move up. You know, the concurrent teaching, some in person, some at home, you know, had a little blip in some of the years. But I think we're trending in a really good direction with that. So I thank the board for making that happen. And then here, you can see the evidence-based reading and writing and the math for the SAT. So Mr. Osbold and his team, they have their data dashboard, and they had this information as soon as the college board released it. So they've been, they've been working and talking with their teams. So where do we go from here at the secondary level? Much like Rob said, we have to ensure that guaranteed viable tier-one instruction. The board has approved new math at both middle and high school over my time here. Now we're digging into ELA. We actually have a meeting this Thursday with middle school and high school representatives in the ELA department. And we have three vendors coming to present their curriculum and materials and resources for secondary English language arts. So they come in the morning and the afternoon. We're going to dig in and see if we can't come to a resolution of things we want to pilot. And hopefully, in January, we'll begin that. And then we'll bring a resolution to the board before the end of the school year for adoption to begin next school year and purchase after July 1. Some of the things that we've talked about at the secondary level in our admin team meetings is the subgroup data, groups of students, because we do still have a gap in some of those groups. So our responsibility is to dig into that and... So our responsibility is to dig into that and, and see are there other interventions or other resources that we can employ to help some of these students be more successful in their coursework? And then the, the big one, a couple of weeks ago, I think there were some newspaper articles about chronic absenteeism across the state. It was improving. Yes, ours did improve from last year. There's nowhere to go but up when you have 30% of our students chronically absent. So last year, we had about 22.7% kids chronically absent in our district. That equates to 1,179 kids. So that means they missed 10% or more of the days they were enrolled in school. So for example, if we had 180 days, we had some snow days and different things, so we didn't have quite that many. But if we had 180 days, 18 absences or greater would be the 10%. So we had a little under 1,120 kids chronically absent. Some of our buildings were as high as 28%. And we had one building as low as 10.6% chronically absent. The state, state percentage is, is a little under 31%. Historically, we look back before, you know, the, the pandemic. In the 2018, 2019 school year, we only had 13.4% of our students chronically absent. So that's the next thing that I challenge our admin team to dig into and come up with some, you know, positive solutions and outreach to our families and find out why some of our students aren't coming to school. And that's elementary up that we're seeing this. So I see Mr. Antoine shaking his head, he knows. But if they're not here to learn, we can have the best curriculum. We can have the greatest teachers, which I think we do. But if they're not here to learn, we're not going to see the results. And they're not going to be successful as we continue in that vertical, you know, progression of grades. I believe that's my last slide. Oh, now NWA. I'm sorry, were there any questions for me about the secondary?
Just one. So Amplify doesn't have a secondary education curriculum?
So they have, they have a middle school. Amplify CKLA has middle school grades six, seven, and eight. We did look at that in the spring. They do not have a high school version. And our middle school teachers felt they wanted to connect to what the high school was doing. So they wanted the six, 12 continuum of the same curriculum and resources and materials. But we did look at that.
Okay, so you have, you have three that are going to present to you?
We have three vendors that are, two in person, one will be virtual on Thursday morning.
Can we have the names of them to look or should we just wait for you?
Just wait because there might be some duds in there and I don't want you to dig into it without.
Yeah, 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 okay.
Yeah, yeah. And we'll let you know if, if, if we decide to pilot, which I'm hoping there's at least one, maybe two, we'll let the curriculum subcommittee know and then they will, you know, inform the, the group as well.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else have any?
Yes, can we, once we, I know you mentioned administrators are working on it, but when we're seeing absent percentages as high as 28%, can we have a follow-up maybe in the spring or something to, if we're working on those numbers at all to try to curve that?
Absolutely. What, what we can do is, you know, we get our chronic absentee, absentee numbers in the fall of the previous school year. You know, we can definitely share what approaches we're taking and what strategies they're, they're trying before that. But we won't really have the numbers until everything's kind of sealed, closed, attendances.
Is there any specific, well, we probably can't get too specific, but is there any commonalities of why kids are being polled or just not showing up?
I mean, this is a unintended consequence of locking the schools down. I mean, really.
I think some, some kids, depends on what level you're at.
It's a causal in effect situation.
Right, I think, you know, some families are doing the right thing when their child has a fever, right? And is sick and keeping them home. I think some kids are just not coming. It could be because they don't feel it's important. Or there could be other obstacles in the way of them feeling like they can be successful in school. We have several, you know, instances of families taking kids out for vacations, more so than in my previous district. But there's a variety of reasons, you know. When you call your student in, just if, it, it's still an absence.
Well, the reason I ask, just because I know we're not exclusive as, you know, school systems, but, you know, it's a struggle sometimes even with companies trying to get employees back into their buildings. So I was just.
I think it'll improve over time.
And if we could have a follow-up maybe in the spring?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Yeah, one of our elementaries only had 10.6% chronic absenteeism.
What are they doing?
I know, we're going to leverage what they're doing, Mrs. Rice.
Mostly.
Come on.
I guess it's more concerned because this has been brought up previous with these reports.
Yes.
And it's mostly the secondary that's a concern.
There are some elementaries that are very concerning.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, we're going to talk a little bit about NWEA because there was a little bit of change in the algorithm. So Mr. Murray's going to take that one.
All right, thank you. So NWA has made some changes to the algorithm that basically selects questions that students answer, you know, in reading and in math, starting, well, I say starting this year, Romeo chose to start this year. NWA gave everybody a heads up and said, you can either opt in for this year or you can wait and opt in for next year. But there is really no opt-in for next year because everybody's moving towards it. And so we decided that, you know, because we were making the change to CKLA and with some other changes in place that it just made sense. We really couldn't find any reason why we needed to wait to change, you know, to, to their new algorithm. Basically, what the new algorithm impacts, and I'll explain the three major changes, but it, it, it impacts the norms, right? And our ability to look at data in the, from the past and compare it to the data that we have now. So basically, what NWA did is they started the data clock over for us. So this is like year zero. We don't have norms from them yet regarding the 23, 24 algorithms and won't have them probably for a few years until they can collect enough information to kind of look at that, you know, student achievement on the screener across the country for participating districts and schools. But the three major changes are, and I'll show you a graphic in a minute. First is related to grade level questions. So before, questions would match to a student's ability regardless of what grade level they were at. Now what the adaptive test does is it searches for questions that are closer to a student's grade level. So for example, a student gets a math question right. What the algorithm is doing is looking for a more rigorous math question at fifth grade with the default of sixth grade or seventh grade occurring after maybe all fifth grade. Fifth grade questions have been exhausted by the student. And it's the same in reverse, right? If you've got something wrong, they're looking for a question in fifth grade with less rigor, moving down to fourth grade or third grade as necessary. Before, it was just kind of all over the place in terms of how questions were, were assigned to kids, you know, essentially, you know, without, not rhyme or reason. But the test is set up for a student to get 50% correct or 50% wrong anyways, right? It's a screener, it's not meant for somebody to get 100%. It's just trying to give us a, a 30,000-foot view of their achievements. Instructional area weighting has changed. So right now, there's equal weighting to the instructional areas, but the new test will give greater emphasis to certain instructional areas. This change is only coming in math. And then there's this additional factors piece, which we're starting to learn more about. And that's not impacting, you know, the algorithm at this point. But this, different aspects of rigor, we'll find out more about that and its impact on the mathematics screener. So this is the graphic I was telling you about. So here's a fifth grader, right? Gets the question right. First choice for the question would be something of greater rigor in fifth grade with kind of this cascading window, whether it's right or wrong of, of moving down in grade level or moving up in grade level after the questions at the student's specific grade level have been exhausted. So this is our kindergarten, or excuse me, our, our elementary information for this year. Like I said, they cautioned us at NWA in comparing any of this data to previous data because of the change in algorithm, but we went ahead and compared anyways. Only because we, Jennifer and I both, Jennifer and I both figured that, you know, even with the algorithm tweak, we weren't going to see a significant increase in scores or significant decrease in scores. It would probably be something similar to what we've had, you know, over years previous. And so when we looked at last year's fall data and this year's fall data, that's pretty much correct, as you can see here.
It's harder. It's harder, though.
Yeah, this is.
It should be harder.
You remember that the, this, this idea of mean rit for a grade level doesn't stay the same. It isn't static. So the, the threshold goes up every year incrementally. We certainly can exceed that threshold in a grade level or we can be lower than it. And, you know, each unique group of kids, I always, I always, you know, I always want to caution when we start looking at test scores over time that, you know, the fifth grade group that scored a little lower this year is different than the fifth grade group from the previous year. They can just be academically different. So the more we look at achievement in, in actual grade level cohort as it moves through the system, and that isn't necessarily how the state gives us scores or, or, you know, makes it easy to share that information publicly. So that, that score goes up and I don't think it's the same. I mean, it's a little different.
No, and it even changes winter and spring testing. So the number of weeks of instruction even shift. So that was the caution that Rob talked about. We didn't put the normed rit on there because they cautioned us not to, but we were pretty close to what they were already. But we were just curious, what did our fall to fall look like? And as you can see, they were most worried about math. And that seventh grade group from last year rocked it out in eighth grade math this year. But as Dr. Robinson said, it's one piece of information, it's one piece of data for us to look at. It really is a screener, as, as Mr. Murray shared. And it just gets us to dig in a little deeper. You know, the teachers have some dynamic reporting within the testing reports. And, you know, they can use this at their CAS meetings or SLC meetings if they really want to dig in and, and see what areas our, our kids could, you know, need some more extension in or some more support in.
I have a question in this. If, if there's a 50% meant to fail, and I, I, it, it is frustrating when you give a kid a test and the better they do, the harder it gets for them.
Yeah.
It's like it's meant to have them take the test till they fail. Why do we put, and it's probably just the state, it's the way funding is, but why do we put so much emphasis on it? Because I know as a teacher, like, there are so many other assessments that we can get a better picture of child's achievement versus this.
This isn't an achievement test for sure, right? It's a screener.
But I think the community looks at it and, and like, we focus so much on this. And is there, you know, are there other pieces that we can show to highlight what kids are actually learning and capable of doing? Like, I mean, this is a requirement.
We, we assess the heck out of kids.
I know, I know.
So, yeah. I mean, there, that we have lots of things within our classroom.
I'm just like, why do we put so much emphasis, I guess, on the reporting of this to the community when there's plenty of other ways that we give?
The past several years, it was mandated by the state legislature that we do benchmark assessments and report it to the board. That has been lifted, but we continue to give it at least two times. Most of the time, we do the January, the winter testing as well to kind of calibrate and see if there are any other kids that are, you know, not gaining the typical growth. But yeah, this is, this is away from the classroom. So it really is hard for a classroom teacher to take this and go, oh, I can do this now in my classroom. It gives them some information. But they're closer to the student, closer to the content, gives you a lot more information. Yep. Any other questions? That's all we have.
Thank you.
So I have a couple of things in my report tonight. Of course, we've had count day and we've moved a couple, a couple of weeks past that. So I want to caution everyone, not just the board, but everyone, this is preliminary information. And it does change a little bit, not significantly, but there is some change. But people want to know, including the superintendent. So we've been able to pull some data together with the help of Vicki so we could present that to you. We've taken the time to share this at our couple of different leadership team meetings. And, and, you know, I've shared with the board tonight. And then we'll put a, a short on-demand presentation together to share with our staff. So we're looking at here just a summary of our district-wide enrollment. This is full-time equivalent students, this is not head count. And then on the bottom, you see this is the last six years of our fall count day enrollment. So we're not going to get in the weeds on the blended count and 10%. This is just simply fall. And fall is the most significant portion of our funding calculation at 90%. So this is best. So, so when we look over time, you know, we certainly see from 21 to 23 a trend. And, and then we begin to question. But there's a reason for that, so we'll talk a little bit more about that moving forward. And the reason is, you remember our dissolution of the shared time agreement with Lutheran High North? So this is the same total amounts as the chart before. You'll see in 2019, we had 52, 73, 06, and FTEs. Of that, 2,000, 203.82 was shared time FTEs. So of the teachers we hired that were employed to teach at Lutheran High North, within that part of the pupil accounting code, those students, those fractions of their schedule, those individual hours added up to 203.82. And then moving across, you can see just the division of RCS student enrollment and shared time enrollment. Like I said, the same data. The last spring, we made the decision for good reason. The board supported us stepping away from the shared time agreement. And we knew overall that that was likely to create a dip that we were going to have to speak to for years to come to some degree. So I wanted to just simply start with showing you the glimpse of it this year. And I think most importantly, when, you know, we use the graphing system here to drop a trend line, our trend is still increasing. So our true RCS enrollment has gone up despite the shared time component. But because we're not pulling those extra FTEs from Lutheran High North this year, that's going to overall make it look like our enrollment is down. And it is for the purposes of funding. We also remember that it was costing us about $1 million a year to actually support the shared time program. And what we were actually getting in revenue from that program was about $400,000. That would equate to about 40 FTEs. If we just simply said revenue-based FTEs, it'd be about 40. The other significant shift we made last year was the elementary redistricting. So all I'm simply doing here is showing you a four-year snapshot of the three buildings that were involved in the redistricting. So we have Amanda Moore there. And, and blue to yellow for Amanda Moore is the last four years, 2021 to 2024. In the middle is Heville. Once again, we see 2021 to 2024. And on the far right is Washington. So I want to begin by just talking specifically about Washington. And gray represent the fall count for Washington at 353 students. And that was what was the final red flag that we needed to do something. So with the redistricting, we see that Washington's enrollment has bounced back at this point to 405. We took the majority of those students that were redistrict, went from Heville to Washington. Okay, and so you see Heville, you know, not only got a handful of students, a much smaller group from Amanda Moore, but they also had an increase in enrollment. So they're actually higher than they were last fall, and that's good news. We do see a decline at Amanda Moore. And we're still looking into the data of that. We think two things are a part of that. We did move about 14 kids from Amanda Moore to Heville to backfill the redistricting. But we also believe there, our incoming cohort of kindergarteners is smaller than the exiting group of fifth graders that are now sixth graders. And our overall goal, based on that Platt Moran Creswell Enrollment Forecasting Report that we did last year is to get our elementaries at 450 students. And we think that's probably what that mean enrollment is going to be, at least as far out as we can legitimately look. So that's a snapshot at how the redistricting. I know that was a stressful time for all of us. But we're, we're settled and we're rolling. And Washington actually does have. we're rolling. And Washington actually does have also some new students as well that weren't just a part of the redistricting. Um, last thing I want to share is, w- we know in June every year, we have to make assumptions for our budgeting because we haven't heard all the information we need to hear from Lansing, and we need to actually get to count day to know how many students we're going to have. So, uh, we're starting with that same red graph we started with, which is six years of our fall FTE data, but I'm really narrowing in on 2024, um, this fiscal year. Uh, and our buzzet- budget assumption was based on us having 5,000, 5,183 FTEs. Um, so, currently with this preliminary data, we've exceeded our budget assumption by 45 FTEs, which, which is good. Uh, when we get closer to doing an amendment to the budget, Vicky will talk about how our assumption for what we thought the increase would be this year, uh, actually ended up being a few dollars more than that. So, in between these two things, uh, we're actually probably going to see a little bit more revenue, um, than, than we originally predicted in our preliminary budget that you approved in June. Any questions on any of this enrollment information?
Good news, huh?
Yes. Yes, I, I felt like Dr. Demus, I know you like data, and so, the, the blue line on this chart, uh, is, is the superintendent's best friend. So, we're excited about that. And, and there's a lot that goes into that. Um, with our, uh, administrative leadership team, our building principals, we did look at specific buildings and broke down grade levels and things like that, and, and we like to do that. We like to analyze. Um, we're really seeing that trend at this building and the high school of an increase in enrollment, and there is a, there is a portion of that that's true school of choice. Um, but the greatest trend is, um, district resident families who were choosing another educational setting. I would tell you primarily parochial, but not all parochial, uh, and they are choosing to come back and, and have their kids attend here. So, um, so that's good news. Um, just a couple of things, as kind of an extension of the, um, subcommittee meeting and, and the report from Mr. Young, uh, we have a resolution on tonight's agenda, um, with support from the committee, to now step forward and expand the visitor management, um, software, the Raptor system, to, uh, the elementary and early childhood facilities. Um, so, first thing tonight, we're hopeful for approval, and then there's a period of procurement of the software and the equipment and installation. Uh, we're planning some initial training, uh, at elementary and early childhood. We don't have Safe Ed staff, so it's the clerical and office staff that'll, I'll be using the system. So, we're going to do some initial training, uh, and then get them comfortable. Uh, and once, similar to what we did at the secondary level, we'll make a notification that the system's in place. We'll work with people for 30 days, um, before we actually, you know, hard and fast, you got to have ID. Um, we also have a lot more, um, designated volunteers that work in our elementary buildings, and we created a badging system last year in anticipation of this. So, you know, if you are a designated volunteer, you're, you're working the media center with, with library book checkout or something like that. We have a way to, to put those people in the system, and then they're just, they're selected from the system, and they get that badge. They're not going through the actual screening every time they come in a building. And we also know there's a handful of times each year, field day, Halloween parade, and things like that, where we're going to bypass the system, because if we put every person that comes through the system, we'll never get to the event, um, before it's time to go home. But, uh, um, so, right now, it's really about getting the approval and working with our staff that are going to use this to make sure they're comfortable. Um, the other thing that we shared, uh, in the committee meeting is, um, we, we highlighted the connections of the district safety teamwork and the school safety work in connection to our strategic plan, but our efforts are always more comprehensive than that. Um, so, we're continuing what we have done leading up to having a strategic plan with setting some school safety focus areas each year. Uh, and I was grateful that we had the opportunity to kind of bring these and draft to the committee, share them with them, and kind of get their endorsement. We took this back at our most recent district safety team, uh, and this is our list for this year. Um, so, in the area of relocation and reunification, uh, we're actually finalizing now the site processes. So, when we bring a group of kids to Woodside Church, where are they going to enter? Where are we going to take parents? Where are we going to take kids? Where are we going to do that reunification? Uh, and we work with the staff there, because the one good thing about us having church partners is they bring a lot of kids in every weekend, so they already have kind of a way to do this, where kids get dropped off and parents pick them up. So, um, we're leveraging some input from them. Uh, and then I would remind the board that, um, one of the things we've learned from the Oxford tragedy is that people from the building that would run a reunification process aren't necessarily there when you need to start, because that, that facility is still secured and being cleared by law enforcement. Um, so, we're actually training tech department staff and our admin building staff, um, to stand up and run reunification, and as building personnel come, um, to the site, we would actually have them come alongside and, and help. Um, in terms of our active violence, active shooter training, um, we, we're just, we want to solidify this, uh, and we have a system that we think now of training new staff and makeup training. Uh, both of our police liaison officers and, uh, Mr. Gamel, our Safe Ed leader, now certified trainers. Um, they went through that training in June, so we are self, um, supporting in terms of running training, and, and that's a good thing. Um, uh, the other element of this is just continue to move forward in the types of scenarios and the times of day that we do our practice drills. Um, this is not intended to make drills more intense. Um, there is a large body of research that says that's the worst thing you can do, is make them as realistic as you can. Um, so, we're still using that walk-through, talk-through approach, um, low anxiety, but also wanting to make sure that students are informed and confident, uh, in, in making a response in the event of an emergency. Uh, visitor management speaks for itself, district-wide implementation this year, uh, improve, uh, emergency communication. So, uh, we, we have approval, we have purchase, and now we're beginning to use the two-way radios. We've got to add some more in. We've added that resolution for tonight, uh, and we're still learning. Um, the one thing that, uh, I am, uh, excited to know is that, yeah, the connection of these to our bus system, our bus communication is markedly better, um, with this system, and, and they use the radios the most. Um, so, we know that that system is working. We are not seeing any identified gaps in the communication with buses in the northwest, um, portion of the district like we used to, so we, we think we're in a much better place there. Uh, and then finally, this is kind of that direct piece to the, to the strategic plan, is coordination with our emergency response agencies. So, um, the pandemic kind of created some separation, uh, in that regard, and, and we just invited those response representatives back to our, uh, most recent district safety team meeting, and we're just beginning a conversation. Uh, and right now, we're thinking for this year, every other month, we would have them come, and we would have some specific, um, work that we would be doing with them. Um, so, um, one of the things that we have to do, because just like us as a district, they have had turnover. Um, so, relationship and facility awareness is, is really an important piece of this year. Um, and we want to be able to get that with our parents and community as well. Uh, every time there's an ambulance or a, a police car in front of a school, it doesn't mean something's wrong. Um, so, we really want to get to a level where, um, not just our school resource officers, but other patrol officers, you know, if it fits in their day from time to time, that they can stop at our school buildings, check in with the principal, you know, say hi, meet the secretaries, is there anything new you guys are doing? You know, and then, and in a 10 or 15-minute visit, there's just familiarity in the event of an emergency. Um, so, we've got some other things that we're going to do. We're not sure how far we'll get through this, this year, um, but I'm just, um, I'm just glad that we've re-engaged, and, and they are totally on board to, to be with us. Um, you know, the difficult thing is, we have such, um, such a limited amount of state police staff on duty from the substation that, you know, they can be in a meeting, and when a call comes in, you know, we don't, we don't pull rank on that. Um, they got to go respond, but, uh, we're hopeful to just reengage in that and, and move the need, needle forward there. Um, the last thing, um, we've just begun, uh, conversation about, um, the readmission of our district climate survey. Um, so, if you remember, we administered the survey, uh, initially for baseline data in February of 2022, so we're coming up on, um, two years out from that. Um, we're internally working with our original survey team to just, um, audit the original version. Uh, and then, we're looking at, within the strategic plan focus areas, are there any additional questions that we may need to ask a specific group, parents, students, or staff, um, to get some data in connection with our planning, um, for the strategic plan? If that happens, I don't think that'll be anything extensive. Um, um, and so, our goal is to get this updated and, and, um, do this readmission by the early December, and one of the reasons we've moved this from February to the fall is we ran out of time in the first admission for us to actually get to the building staff level. Um, so, we had conversation with the board, and then with our leadership team, but then the individual building results, there wasn't time for the administrators to spend time at a staff meeting or a PD day, um, with the staff in their building, and the best laid plans to do it at the beginning of the next year is just never a good plan. So, we feel if we can switch, shift the administration, um, to the end of this calendar year, that's going to give us a couple more months, um, to work with the data within this school year. Uh, once our, um, once we audit that original version, I'll be sending it to the board, um, so that you can take a look at it, reacquaint yourself with the questions, and provide any input. Um, I think one of the things we have to be, um, conscious of is we have some baseline data. We know there's a couple of questions in there that it was just like, you know, why wouldn't people have said this? Um, so, um, so we know there'll be some changes, but, um, we, we want to stay consistent as much as we can. Uh, and then, the other thing that we're having conversation about is, um, moving the open-ended responses, uh, which was two questions on every, uh, survey for fifth graders and up, um, parents, staff, everybody. Um, for our students, we are talking about moving those com- um, those questions to focus group dialogue with students that, that kind of aligns with our strategic plans to student voice goals, uh, and not necessarily having them complete those in the electronic survey, but actually touch representative groups at each level to ask them those questions and take feedback. Uh, and we think that'll create some efficiency in getting the survey done, but also potentially more authentic data, um, because going through 1,700 open-ended responses from high school students versus sitting with maybe a collection of 150 students in different groups, we think we'll get the same or better, um, feedback from them.
It might stimulate more information, yeah.
And we've seen that, whether it's been election planning or the strategic planning process, focus groups are the way. They just take a little bit more time and energy to scale up.
On that note, can we just, when we were going to the focus groups, I just noticed as a parent of a high school student, it's always the same kids. Um, and it's typically the kids whose parents a lot of times work in the district, or, um, you know, are just all from the same groups. And I, if we're going to do that, I hope that it's just a broader, um, group of kids, and that we're pulling kids, not who are all going to just say the same thing.
Yeah, part of what we've done is, at each level, we've created a list of current student structures that we could leverage for focus group conversations, any conversation, not just this. And now, what we have to do is take that to the next level and make sure that we have representation. Representation by grade level, gender, ethnicity, all of that, you know? Kids who get all As, kids who struggle in school, and, and so, that's a next level for us. I can tell you that, the couple of times that I've done it, you know, when, when we work with the administrators to build a group just organically, that's the easiest way to make sure you get that kind of representation.
Right, because they know them the best.
Um, but, when a group already is meeting, you know, so the, the NHS group is already meeting, or the RAC group is already meeting, for us to be able to just go in and ask questions in that meeting, um, sometimes create some efficiency versus trying to get these kids, you know, to stay after school or pull them out of class, but we, we have to have equal voice.
Random with incentives.
To get them to come to school, right?
Could work.
I know some kids, though, in those groups, it'll be the loudest that, that are, are the voice. So, if you're taking away the open-ended, I, I understand that you're, that's a lot to go through, every kid's open-ended comments, especially if they think it's anonymous, they'll just, um, go off on tangents, but you're, you are taking away that from the kids who would not speak in a public town hall forum, so just keep that in mind.
Or aren't already in a club.
Right.
So, usually, kids in the clubs, they kind of have a one-note voice.
That would be my only concern with going to that.
You know, NHS or whatever, you know, yeah. I want to hear from.
You want them to have the opportunity, too.
Yeah, maybe, you know.
I want to hear from everybody.
That's a good point.
The other thing that we can organically do with a focus group situation is get baseline data, and then go back ourselves, not through the survey company forum, but with us internally create a survey to just simply double-check what we heard with just a ranking and prioritizing. So, um, so, we'll, we're continuing to move in down that road. And that doesn't mean we won't use those two questions for the older students, uh, but our elementary principals spoke loudly that we think we can actually go down a few grade levels lower if we'll just simply talk to kids in a group, um, versus asking them to provide the input through the survey. That's all that I have for tonight.
Okay. Item eight, public comment. Ms. Miller?
Thank you, um, Dr. Demus. Good evening, Board of Education. Um, as a means of just briefly updating you all, I'm sorry, Elizabeth Miller, I live in, uh, in the Village of Romeo, um, concerned resident, citizen, taxpayer. Um, as a means of briefly updating all of you regarding the lot at 297 Prospect Street, our group of concerned residents, we now have a name, um, Green Space on Prospect Street, or GSOP, so someone has abbreviated it, made a presentation to the Romeo Village Council last Monday, consisting of Richard Corey, Donna Folen, and, um, followed up by, um, Franco Fellino. Um, our, our vision for the lot is to encourage a green space that creates a native habitat, is low maintenance, and provides a space for wellness, learning, and relaxation. This is the future the village residents hope to see for this lot. We believe you've received communication from Dr. Robinson with a link to last Monday's meeting with the village council, as well as timestamps, timestamps for the pertinent portions. The presentation itself has been sent to Dr. Robinson and Ms. Bonick, who will hopefully be sharing that with the entire board, board in the very near future. There's about eight slides, I believe, so not, not too much information, but it's in nice color, so it's easy to, to go through. The village council voted unanimously, seven to zero, with the full board, to form a subcommittee to explore this matter. We are excited for the potential future that involves collaboration between the school board, village council, and GSOPs with the aim of realizing our vision for the lot. This is in follow-up from your instruction as a board president last, is, talk to the, talk to the people who can do something, so we did, and so this is why we're back. We look forward to the potential collaborative workshop along with Romeo Community Schools, Village, Romeo Village Council, Six Rivers Land Conservancy, Four County Community Foundation, and the Macomb County's Green Macomb Program. Um, and just in, in closing, we just want to thank you for your time and, and for hearing us, and we invite any questions. We do, look forward to continuing to work with you and hopefully come to some resolution. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, item nine, regular meeting action items. Uh, A, Employee Services Resolution, number 81, Personnel Update. Is there a motion?
Motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item B, Employee Services Resolution, number 82, the Ask Me Maintenance Tentative Agreement. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item C, Facilities Resolution 83, the Emergency Roofing Project at the administrative building.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? D, Technology Resolution 84, the purchase of the Raptor for the elementary schools?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Facilities Resolution 85, the two-way radio system.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Uh, item 10, Board Discussion for the Good of the District?
Uh, I had a few items, Dr. Demus. Um, I'd like to s-
I'd like to start off because I know sometimes news headlines in today's worlds can be very negative. So I had a couple positive ones to shine our community because our community deserves it. The first one I wanted to mention, as it is the month of Halloween, and as we all know, we, I kind of call it our second Peach Fest, which is Tilson Street. And those residents, they put on a great show for our community. They don't ask for much. Most of the shirts that they sell, a portion of those donations go to students and other causes that benefit our community. But I wanted to mention, Main Treats had a situation where bringing a bag of candy, and I wanted to mention sixteen thousand pieces of candy were donated by our community. That is outstanding, and it's incredible when our community, when we ask our community to help or stand up, we do. But the most important one I wanted to mention is rather sad. It's pertaining to a family at Indian Hills, the Finkel family. Their son Ryder is going through a rare brain cancer at the moment, and it's devastating to even hear that, let alone be a parent, let alone to have a student or a child dealing with this. There was a GoFundMe that was set up for a hundred thousand. It was surpassed with a hundred and seven thousand dollars. When this community is in need, we have always stepped up. So I just wanted to say thank you to the community. And one last item was, right now, Main Treats is with, in partnership with Amanda Moore, they are offering for a dollar a sleeve, and that dollar donation will go towards the students at Amanda Moore, and that is running through the thirty-first. And if you would also like to donate additional candy, you can do that up until Friday, the twenty-seventh. Thank you.
Anyone else?
I just wanted to say thank you to Dr. Robinson for our workshop meeting last month or on October ninth, and the ability to be able to visit the buildings and to actually see our communities, bond dollars, what they're doing to our buildings and how great they look. And really, it's really exciting, the lighting, the flooring, all the opportunities, the furniture, the add-ons to our buildings, just makes me proud, so.
Yeah, I think we second that, too, Mike, so.
I'd like to add on to that, too. I mentioned it last meeting we had about showcasing some of the construction, especially, you know, seeing it in person, seeing the dollars at work. It's outstanding, Croswell, Indian Hills, and the countless other buildings. So I know we have our marketing director now. I would love to see additional photos on the Facebook page, just as a reminder to the community that you are the shareholders. We we can't make any of this happen without you. And we're going to probably need additional dollars coming in the, you know, next few years here to continue those projects, to maintain our facilities, to purchase new bus or technology. But I would love to see that progress posted, just because it is truly astounding that, yes, we vote on it, yes, you also vote to provide this for your schools, but we should see some of that out there for the community to also see.
Okay, my turn. Amazing job with facilities and spending money in the right places, but in all that's wonderful, Jennifer and Rob, honestly, the only reason that we're here is because of curriculum and teaching these kids. And I want to give you guys some major kudos because it looks like we're on an upward trend. The last couple of years have been a nightmare. This is amazing news, just just the scoring and the progress in the CKLA, which I'm totally pumped about. My daughter even, she's getting so much better. She's in fourth grade, and she's she's killing it right now, and she was struggling, struggling, and she and she likes it, and she's having a good time, too. So, you know, the whole family, we're reading even more now than ever before. So, yes, we need to do roofs and do safety and build buildings and all of that, but it's for the purpose of.
Academics, right?
Math, reading, science, so, thanks.
Anyone else? Oh, okay. Well, I just want to say that last week, we had another subcommittee meeting, wellness. And I just want to say how important that committee is, that subcommittee dealing with three important areas, nutrition, social and emotional well-being, and physical fitness. And I want to thank Julia for her leadership in that group. So that we're looking forward to some some real action items coming out of that group. And public comment, anyone else? Okay, motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?